Ready back there? Okay, well, you don't have it on the screen, that's why I didn't know. Welcome to the July 19, 2017 Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. At this time, I'd request that everyone turn off or mute your cellphones and stand and do the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and liberty and justice for all.
Applications for preliminary Platts heard during tonight's meeting will be voted on by the Planning and Zoning Commission during the meeting. Please note that the Planning and Zoning Commission's vote this evening on applications for the preliminary Platts is final. Only a recommendation for denial of these applications would be heard before the County Council. The following documents are introduced as a matter of record for public hearing and regular meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission, the Unified Development Orders of St. Charles County, including zoning maps, and the Year 2025 Master Plan for St. Charles County, which includes the Year 2025 Future Land Use Plan map. Can I get a motion to open the meeting, please?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Do we have anybody here that's against or wants to speak on this preliminary plat other than the applicant? Okay, if we don't, I'm gonna go ahead and skip how the meeting's going. Go ahead and ask them, read this into the record then. Plumbing plat for Deer Meadows West Highway D, PR 17-08. Shane Walterman, land surveying, is the applicant. The owner is James R. Helferman and Catherine E. Helferman. And property zoning is a agricultural district. The area is 17.24 acres, and the number of lots is three. Location on the north side of Highway D, approximately 600 feet east of St. Joannison's Lane, and it's in Council District Two. Staff?
All right, I'm not sure if we have a connection here with the computer.
Yeah, I know, I see you're having some technical difficulties, but did you want to bring something up on the screen?
The reason I wanted to show you something was they are, there's an attachment to an update this afternoon.
Right.
They are asking for a variance from the required interior street for all driveways to individual driveways along Highway D. Staff has reviewed the plat. We do recommend that, we really don't have an objection to this, to this variance request. So we do recommend that the plat be approved. There are three conditions that we would ask for. The first is the soil evaluation prior to the record plat being submitted. The second is an approved engineering geologic report, which goes along with the soil evaluation standard before the final plat is approved. And the third one is that on the record plat, that the applicant put a note that an entrance permit will be required from the Missouri Department of Transportation prior to obtaining a building permit in order to build a house there if the variance is granted. There were no letters, and if you have any questions, I'd be glad to go through.
Make it short, not a question. Just drove by there. Somebody stole your sign, it's missing from the property.
Well, we don't typically put a sign up for Platts.
Okay. And this was just down from Sneak Road where we used to, I think, two or three, four years ago, we had that thing for a stable.
You had what?
We had a rezoning here for a stable by Sneak Road.
Okay.
And this is where it was, but I looked for the sign, but it wasn't there.
Okay, all right.
And the weeds were waist-high anyhow, so.
Well, I did have some pictures on here. The staff was out on site. It is a high point. We also had the topography. It is a high point along Highway D. I think the elevation's around 800 feet there, and it slopes. But this will be up to MoDOT to make the decision as to where the driveways can be placed.
I do have one concern, and I don't know if that's something that we can discuss or maybe consider adding, is that with the speed of the cars along there, they are asking for a variance, which is gonna put these driveways about 400 feet apart. I think that my concern is, it sounds like from an elevation, it's fine, and the sloping around it, but that you are gonna have possibly some site limitations in terms of people being able to see cars coming up the driveways. And I would suggest that if it's possible that we could put some sort of additional variance to add, no kind of landscaping or improvements or anything within maybe the 50 or 60 feet, I don't know if there's a specific number, but something that would give people plenty of time to see traffic coming and also see the traffic that's on DC, people in the driveway. I think that that would make for a much, much safer situation.
I would just speak to that. I drive it all the time. That's a rural area out there. I mean, I live out there. If you do that for that location, you have to do it all the way up Highway D, up to Highway T, getting to Warren County. I mean, it just doesn't make sense.
Well, they're asking for a variance. I mean, it's, I mean, they're not asking for a change in access for all roads, all things along. They're just asking for the specific property.
Yeah, they'd have to ask for a variance on every one of those. We'd have to grant a variance on every one of them.
I would like to point out also that we did ask for a 20-foot dedication strip for future right-of-way improvements that MoDOT has on their highway transportation plan. So their 50-foot front setback would actually be 70 feet back.
Okay.
For the setback, is it for building setback?
For their, for their residents, for their main building, yes.
Do you know if MoDOT has any kind of requirement for visual site access?
Well, I mean, I.
If you don't, that's okay. I don't know either.
I don't know exactly what they do. I mean, they will meet on-site, and they will evaluate where the driveways would be placed. And this would be important also before they actually address each lot for the subdivision.
Why don't we bring the applicant, is applicant here?
Yes.
Yeah, why don't we bring the applicant up and ask him some of these questions too, then?
Go ahead.
Right, need to raise your right hand? You swear to tell the truth and nothing but the truth?
I sure do.
And state your name and address for the record, please.
Shane R. Walterman, Landmark Surveying, 802 East Main Street, Wentzville, Missouri.
And Shane, don't forget to fill out a speaker's card before you leave today, too. So go ahead and tell, you see, there's a few questions about some of the variables.
Yeah, I do. I've actually applied for the MoDOT entrance permits already. And then also with that, with that 20-foot buffer, also comes a, no, you have, there's a limitation on what you can put there, which also clears your site limits. So that also helps with that situation.
Sure. Do you know how many feet that is, the side limit from there?
Well, you got a 70-foot right-of-way, I believe, right there, which is, it's either 60 or 70, which is 35 foot from center line already.
Right.
So, I mean, there's plenty of room there, and there's not a huge ditch, there's not a huge berm at the road. So there's actually a lot of side ditches. I'd say roughly a quarter-mile minimum each way. So, I mean, it's pretty wide open right there.
So you have no concerns about people putting landscaping or fencing or anything like that?
You know, I don't, because it's gonna be so far back from the actual edge of pavement that I don't see it causing any issues.
Okay. That's the only question. Any other questions for applicant? Okay. Thanks. Go ahead and close this portion of it, and if there's anybody in the room that wants to speak on this matter, we're gonna open up to the public. You have an opportunity to come up and speak if you want. Seen none, go ahead and close it and bring it back before this commission. Any other questions or concerns?
I would make a motion to approve based on the recommendations of staff.
Second.
Mr. Griffin? Mr. Klinghammer? Mr. McBride, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mr. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Cleary?
Yes.
Mr. Leonard?
Yes.
Mr. Fromm votes yes. Mr. Coon?
Yes.
Mr. Klinghammer?
Yes.
Mr. Setley?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Nine-zero. That passes. Thank you. Thank you. We don't have any tabled items. I need a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll make a motion.
And a second.
Second.
Any changes to the minutes, our discussion on them? Seen none? Vote yes in affirmative? Say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? So we have some other business. We have a briefing from St. Charles County Counselor's Office. I wanna come forward. Who's up? You guys gonna do it from there?
I am gonna do it from here.
Okay, sure.
Chairman, thank you. I'm Jennifer George. I'm the Assistant Director of Administration for the county. Since Don Baver's retirement last year, I've been working closely with the Community Development Department. Over the course of the last few months, actually more recently, we've had a new attorney in the office who's been assigned to replace largely Harold Ellis's role in the Counselor's Office on Land Use Law, and that's Arda Ror, who's here with me this evening. Arda started doing some research for us, and then also, I think, one of the members of this commission had passed along a recent court case out of St. Louis County and then the Eastern District Court of Appeals that set out how you maintain your contested case status when that decision on a conditional use permit is ultimately challenged in the Circuit Court. That case is somewhat, well, is indeed drastically altering the current landscape of how those conditional use permit final decisions are challenged in court. Currently, today, and has been a long history, that when those conditional use permits, if it's either approved or denied by the Planning and Zoning Commission, going on to the County Council, a challenge of that over in the Circuit Court would be reviewed upon that record that you all are helping to produce in your process and that the County Council isn't adopting when they adopt their final ordinance approving or denying the conditional use permit. There's not a new, brand-new trial. They aren't taking new evidence, they aren't hearing new witnesses. They review it solely on that record that we send across the street. The court case that came down back in April of this year, now sets forth that if we don't use a more stringent administrative procedure, and we don't have that administrative procedure set forth in county ordinance, that we are not meeting the requirements of that, what's called a contested case standard under the Missouri Administrative Procedure Act. And that case will be reviewed from start to finish, brand-new, in the Circuit Court if it's reviewed. So typically that, I will kind of describe it as you're across the street in Circuit Court on appeal, and they're giving a great deal of deference to the decision of that Planning and Zoning Commission and to that governing body who's made that decision. Now, you will have that full review of the case were to be uncontested, heard entirely by a judge from start to finish. Met a little bit and had some conversations with the County Council and the County Executive, and their desire is to maintain conditional use permits at the status of a contested case upon review in the Circuit Court. And so we need to make some changes to our procedures in order to meet that heightened standard. Been working through that, starting to draft some ordinances that are going to put that procedure in place. We actually introduced a bill to the County Council at their last meeting two weeks ago. They kind of, it's in fairly good draft form still, looking for some feedback from members of the council about how they'd like to handle it. I don't think at this point that we're gonna have a lot of change in procedure for the Planning and Zoning Commission. You'll continue to be the place where you take, hold a public hearing, hear from those who are concerned, continue to probably swear witnesses the way that you do today, but the formality after a case leaves Planning and Zoning will be stepped up quite a bit. There'll be, we're still kind of debating exactly how the structure's gonna look, 'cause obviously you know the number of conditional use permits you guys are processing on a regular basis. You know how many people can typically be interested in that particular item, and if you ended up in a situation where you're trying to meet some of four key standards in the court, one of which is cross-examination of witnesses, could end up in a very lengthy hearing process. And the one time that the County Council has acted in that role in the past was about, 15 years ago, in a road vacation, where they sat and conducted a full, full hearing, allowed for introduction of evidence, swearing of witnesses, and it was a very lengthy endeavor, requiring a lot of coaching and counseling from their legal attorney to make sure you can walk through that process that's typically much more of a judicial process than your standard legislative process that they're used to. So I think over the course of the next week and a half, we'll be finishing up that ordinance with council. In advance, then, of the next group of applications coming before you in August, we'll be providing for you some revised instructions that you guys handle at the beginning of your hearing to set out better notice for people of what's gonna be the next step after their applications leave Planning and Zoning Commission. Again, it's only for conditional use permit applications, but I wanted to make sure you guys had a heads-up of that in advance of your next meeting, and be happy to talk about, I think, more details of what that's gonna look like after council's made some key decisions next week.
So are they talking about this part of it right here at the beginning, when we tell them that anything that's passed will then be passed to?
Correct.
County Council? 'Cause I also say that at the in-between, you know, afterwards, too. Tell them, don't forget.
I think what we're, the direction we're heading right now is that we will likely utilize a hearing officer and hold a separate administrative hearing beyond the County Council meeting, and that all public comment opportunity will be at that hearing.
I gotcha.
That date and when that falls from between leaving Planning and Zoning and the bill being introduced by council is something we're still trying to work out, because our goal is not to turn this process into a seven-month-long endeavor for anyone who wants to come in for a conditional use.
Sure.
But that standard that's been set forth is pretty high. So to try and make sure that we capture what we need to on the record for those cases that could be the ones that are the really controversial ones, that's gonna be key for us. And if we can try and condense the process for those that are not particularly controversial, not gonna take a lot of time with a lot of residents who have a lot of interest in it, we wanna keep it as short as possible, but we're still trying to figure out how to do that.
Sure.
Yes, that instruction at the beginning will either include some new language about a new hearing date.
Okay.
Or notice locations of where they could go learn more information on the website about the timing of a particular hearing.
We're very interested in the decisions of these being made on our side of the street and not being made at the judicial side.
Sure.
That's, that's the important part. And this administrative hearing is, you know, still trying to wrap exactly how that's all gonna work together, but, you know, we wanna make sure that the procedures are followed right, and sometimes council members are a little extroverted ourselves and may say or do things wrong that ends up taking our own ability to make those decisions here, being challenged across the street and getting overturned. So we wanna make sure that we're dotting the i's and crossing the t's and paying attention to the, to the new rules that are being laid out.
So it's gonna add another layer to every CUP, then?
Yes. The ones that are, that, I think the part that we're still working on is if it's gonna be everyone or the ones that are, that request a administrative hearing. Some of them are, you know, a little bit non-controversial and a little simpler than others, but some of the bigger ones, like, for example, a trash transfer station, has huge implications, and we wanna make sure that we're dotting our i's and crossing the t's to make sure that both sides get a fair hearing of it, both the potential neighbors as well as the, as the company.
Remember the topsoil case that we had?
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
Well, shortly, well, about two weeks after that, the case where this ruling came from, the Eastern District Court of Appeals held oral argument at Linnwood. And this particular case was argued there in the School of Business.
Really?
Yeah, and that was right after we had our top, our topsoil case. So when Judge Odenwald, who was gonna, that was his case, so I made sure we got, I said, get me the opinion. So I got the copy of the opinion the day it was released and then sent it over to Keith.
I'm glad you were, you were on top of that.
Yeah.
Wanna make sure that we stay abreast of what's going on in the.
The part of the problem in that case in St. Louis County was they, their procedure didn't follow the procedure that had been laid out for a contested case. They just said, oh, we both agreed. And the court said, no, you just, you can't do that. You can't just agree that this is the ground rules, you gotta, here's the rules you have to follow. And it was a rock quarry down toward Six Flags, an expansion of a rock quarry, so that's when it's my sort of.
We've dealt with that issue, too, haven't we?
Yeah, that bell went off and said, you know, Judge, give me, give me a copy of this case. So St. Louis County has more problems than we do about, 'cause they had no, they had no procedure to speak of.
Well, Mr. Ellis is correct. This, if you read decades and decades' worth of cases, you'd see that no one even has a conversation when they show up in Circuit Court about whether it's contested. Everyone assumes they are there on a contested case review. So this has definitely changed the landscape for everyone. We've been working with a lot of the local government attorneys throughout the area, trying to figure out how are you handling this? Have you drafted an ordinance yet? And I, we may very well be the first ones out of the gate trying to get something in place, but trying to find some best practices from anybody who's used them in other instances to try and apply to this particular situation.
Okay. So just so I'm clear, we'll still have the hearing here, but what we're basically doing is add one more level, that if they, at some point away, other, there's, it's contested, it goes to the review.
It's gonna be, I wouldn't necessarily describe that we're gonna have another layer. It's more of taking, what we're trying not to do to the poor County Council is have them sit and hold an extremely lengthy hearing, take swearing everyone, allowing all kinds of cross-examination, taking everything into evidence is part of their regular council meeting. So we're gonna shift that over to a hearing officer to do that bulk of that evidence gathering and record production, and deliver that back to the County Council for their review.
I see. It'll be more or less filtered by the time it gets to the judge.
Correct.
Okay.
And I, best I remember from the oral argument, I don't believe in the Planning and Zoning in St. Louis County even swore their witnesses like we do, here at this meeting.
And they don't send their Planning and Zoning items to County Council for a decision unless it was an appeal of a denial.
Yeah.
Otherwise, the decision is entirely made at the Planning and Zoning level.
All right. Any other questions for staff on this? Thanks.
Thank you very much.
You wanna?
If we could, please, we've got some new staff in the Division of Planning and Zoning that Robert would love to introduce.
Thank you. It's not too often that we have such a short agenda, so maybe this is a good time.
Nice job. Perfect.
We tried really hard with this short agenda. Worked out well, obviously. But I guess first I wanna thank everyone here for just an amazing amount of work that everyone's putting into this, this question to help us get our, as in the county, get our procedures right. But to me, it helps drive home the point that rezonings are legislative, as they say, and then conditional use permits is an administrative function that's more, it is a little bit higher, it is a little bit higher standard. I guess one point I would like to mention is, the best piece of advice I could give with conditional use permits is stick to those criteria like glue. And we don't necessarily have hard and fast criteria for rezoning cases, but with conditional use permits, we do, so that's my best recommendation. And when you discuss a motion, it's always great to, actually speaking about it in terms of the criteria, and to, it's wonderful, actually, for you to articulate the reasons why you think it does comply or why it, why it doesn't comply. Anyway, I'm talking about the last thing on the agenda. Let me get next to what I was here to ask to do. We have essentially almost an all-new staff that you may have even not had a chance to meet before. But let me start on our left. I think you've met Anissa Kumero, who's our clerical staff member representing Planning and Zoning Division and Development Review. And you'll see Anissa's face at all of our future Planning and Zoning Commission meetings. Obviously, as I always say, if you need anything at all, just let us know and we'll, we'll help you. If you have any questions, if you, if you need anything, if you need advice, whatever it is, well, we're here to help you, because that's our, that's our job, that's our role. We're here to support you and to help you. On our left, if Karen, you wanna stand up? Karen Hutchins? Karen's a new planner, too, with us. And Karen has a really varied background, everything from economic development with, in the private sector, in the, with the state, also with lots of experience with housing, with CDBG, master plans, military base planning. I mean, there's just really a long, interesting list of experience. But one project I mentioned, just 'cause it's interesting to me, is they, Karen previously worked in San Francisco at one point, and originally from, born in Chicago, but lived in Mississippi, firm of the years, worked in Mississippi, and also worked in the San Francisco area. But after the earthquake that toppled the Embarcadero Freeway, Karen did the environmental review and assessment in terms of pedestrian access, is that right? And the pedestrian plan, that's kind of an interesting thing that Karen's worked on. Let's see, what else should I say? You have a.
Why are you in St. Charles?
A son who is, let's see, a West Point graduate, I think, and is a general in the.
Yes, he's currently a captain and serving in Korea at this point. He is the adjutant general for his shop at the battalion level.
Oh, I see. Okay.
So he's doing really great there. And I have a younger son who's just finished his first year at Oral Roberts University. And so I have two sons and a wonderful husband, and as Robert has said, I have a lot of experience in many different areas, transportation planning, economic development, housing. But the Embarcadero project was a very interesting one. The day the freeway collapsed, I was actually in a retail center that was located next to the freeway. And one of the ladies actually escaped and came into our parking lot, car dusted with the cement, and she said, you guys gotta come help me. And we said, no, we can't do that, 'cause we can't get back to the freeway, 'cause she was in total shock. So I remember that day very well, when the freeway collapsed. And I worked for Caltrans at that time, and we got the rebuild project. And of course, one of the phases was to reconstruct the freeway, freeway right where it was. And with the help of the community, we were able to have them to reconstruct going around the community, therefore opening up that West Oakland community for other development opportunities. So that was really a great opportunity for us. And I'm just excited to be here. You asked the question, how did I get to St. Charles? Well, my husband was transferred. He currently works for Federal Express, and his family lives in Illinois, and he was transferred to Earth City. And I did my due diligence in searching for school districts in St. Charles County. And I did my due diligence in searching for school districts, and St. Charles County had the best school district. So we moved to St. Charles, and that's how we got here.
Well, welcome.
Yeah.
But are you a Cubs fan?
No. I'm a Cardinals fan.
Nice answer.
Good thing. Next, I'd like to introduce Mark Price, AICP. And Mark also has an interesting background, too. Masters in Planning from University of Missouri at Kansas City. And I'm sorry, Karen has a Masters in Planning from University of California at Berkeley. Mark worked previously for a city in Missouri. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm forgetting the name of the-
Farmington.
Farmington, right. And after six years, I'm not sure.
Almost five.
Okay, five years, and then went to Carbondale, Illinois. But one of the things about, interesting things about Carbondale, Illinois, if you know, planning in Illinois, it's a little bit different. They have zoning jurisdiction, they can exercise zoning jurisdiction outside of the cities. So within, Mark, for instance, did zoning and plan review, not only within the city of Carbondale, but also within a mile and a half in the county, which is kind of interesting. So it's both city and county at the same time, but anything else you wanted to, Chair, Mark?
I'm a St. Louis native. I grew up here. Grew up in the Fenton Valley Park area. That's where I'm at currently, until I get a little established here, then we'll buy a house and get moving along.
Great. Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Again, we're all here to help you and support you, so if, if you have any questions, send us a, a call or email or anything that you might need, so.
What do you do about children that are living with you? Is that the kind of questions you're talking about?
How old are they?
Do you give me ground feeling, right?
Yes.
Trying to get rid of the young.
Yes.
I'm gonna reassign that question to someone else, I think, but-
Send that to the County Council.
Yeah, I'll, I'll address that.
I got a legal interpretation.
Thirty-two and thirty-three?
Oh, they're out, they're adults.
Oh, they got, they got, I got the grandkids now, too.
That's another matter. They go with the-
Okay. Anyway, I didn't think that was the kind of question he was talking about, but he did said any questions, so.
Okay.
Thanks. Yeah. Thanks, Robert.
Thank you.
All right, anything else for the joy of, anybody wanna do a adjourn?
Most do adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Senator George.